Good morning. I am calling to order our regularly scheduled meeting of the Committee of the Whole. My name is Elizabeth Glidden and I am the Chair of this committee. And we are joined today by Councilmembers Gordon, Reich, Bender, Council President Johnson, Councilmember Andrew Johnson, Yang, Quincy, Goodman, Frye, and Palmisano. We are a quorum of the Committee of the Whole and able to do business. We have three items on our agenda today. And I am going to ask to amend the agenda to add an additional item. It is an item that is related to item number one, which is on prevailing wage requirements for public improvement contracts ordinance. There is a resolution that has been passed out in front of each council member on the dais on reaffirming the city's commitment to Responsible Contractor Act and adopting additional factors. So I'd like to move that this item be added to the agenda as item number two, so we can dispense of it along with item number one. And then the remaining items would be each moved down one. So I'll move that. All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that item is approved. Or that change to the agenda is approved. So our first item is a public hearing relating to prevailing wage requirements for public improvement contracts ordinance. And I'm going to invite Ms. Corbell to give us an overview of that. Gary Winter is here and he is the primary staff person on the related resolution for which there's not a public hearing, but it is a related item. So I'm going to let him just give a very brief overview after Ms. Corbell of what that is. Then we will open the public hearing and see if there's anyone who would like to testify on the prevailing wage requirements. And that's how we will go about with these first two items. Ms. Corbell.
Good morning, Council Vice President, Council President, and Committee members. My name is Bell McCorbell. I'm the Director of the Minneapolis Department of Civil Rights here this morning to provide just some brief information on our request to amend the ordinance before you, which is Title II, Chapter 24 of the Minneapolis Code of Ordinances Related to Administration of Public Works. So in the city's ongoing focus on developing and strengthening and also clarifying its policies to protect workers from wage theft, our current prevailing wage ordinance is one such tool. The prevailing wage ordinance has been on the city's books for many years, and the current amendment provides clarification and codifies into the ordinance the city's current practices. The Civil Rights Department has in the past and will continue to monitor contractor performance related to this provision. Just last year, through its prevailing wage monitoring, the Civil Rights Department recovered almost $200,000 of unpaid wages to workers on city projects. So thank you to Council Vice President Glidden and Council President Barbara Johnson for their leadership on this. I have to say that about 10 minutes after I started work for the city back in 2010, I was in a meeting about this exact provision. So I'm happy to see that we're finally bringing it before the council. A lot of work was also put into this ordinance revision by our former Assistant City Attorney, Peter Ginder. The version of the ordinance that you have before you probably has some changes that are in red and also in black. And I'll tell you the difference between those two. The changes in black are on the February 24th version of the ordinance amendment. That was posted the last week in March, and those were the original amendments that got posted. There was a stakeholder meeting that occurred that was hosted by the Council Vice President on April 5th. And the changes that you see on that version, the final version, that's dated April 13th, occurred as a result of that meeting with representatives from the Associated General Contractors, the Association of Women Contractors, the Minneapolis Building Trades Council, the National Association of Minority Contractors, the Minnesota Mechanical Contractors, and the National Electrical Contractors Association. Also, along with representatives from these various groups, the staff was in the stakeholder meeting from the City Attorney's Office, the Department of Public Works, Civil Rights, and Finance. So I will just go through very briefly and highlight the changes and point out the section where the language occurs in the ordinance. So the purpose of this amendment is again to codify into ordinance the current practice of wage enforcement for city contracts of at least $50,000. And you will see that in the April 13th version of the document in Section 24.200. The next highlight is that this amendment also affirms the federal labor standards and prevailing wage provisions for federal contracts under the Federal Davis Bacon Act. Those are in the April 14th version of the document at Section 24.200, and those are in black. The next highlight is that we are establishing that contracts under $50,000 and not subject to the Federal Davis Bacon Act, where monitoring actually starts at $2,000, that those contracts will be reviewed for payment of wages on a complaint basis only. And those occur, that change is in Section 24.200, and that one is in red on the April 13th version of the document. We're also establishing that any laborer, mechanic, or employee employed by a contractor or subcontractor on a project covered by this is intended to be a third-party beneficiary. And this is one of the most significant changes that we're making to this ordinance. Because what this does is it allows employees on our contracts to be able to sue for and recover wages that they did not get paid during the performance of a contract. And that has not existed prior to this time. And I'll give you an example that this has happened in the city in the past, and it happened in 2007 with a company called Affordable Granite. They had a contract over at the convention center, and they were, there were employees that were classified as laborers, but they were actually doing tile work and terraza floorwork, and they were working as cement masons. And there's a substantial difference in pay between a laborer and that skilled craft. But because those employees were misclassified through that project, they were not paid the proper wages. At the end of the contract, Affordable Granite was paid off by the city and I think has since gone bankrupt, but I could be wrong about that. But those employees were left withholding about $50,000 worth of money that they needed to be paid. And so the attorney tried to sue on their behalf, but because the employees were not a direct party to the contract, they didn't have standing to sue for those lost wages. And so this new provision will give employees that standing or the right to sue for monies that they may be owed by a contractor on a city project. The next highlight is that we are providing required language to ensure that the appropriate provisions are included in all of our city contracts. That language is in Section 24.220, and that appears in black. We're also confirming certain documents, the statements and records that are required for compliance monitoring. And that is in Section 24.230 in black. We're confirming that it's, or reconfirming actually, that the Civil Rights Department is responsible for monitoring compliance with these provisions. That is in Section 245, establishing penalties for failure to comply with this article. That is in Section 250 and 260. And then we're also clarifying the responsibility for each, the prime contractor, the subcontractors, and the independent contractors. And that is in Section 265. And those are the highlights of this ordinance amendment. And again, this is work that the Civil Rights Department already does. As I mentioned, we've already recovered quite a bit of money on behalf of employees working on our city contracts. And there's quite an extensive method for managing compliance of this provision. And I will stop there.
Thank you very much, Ms. Corbell. And if there aren't questions, there's very thorough review of the ordinance, then I would ask Mr. Winter to give a brief overview of the Responsible Contractor Resolution, just so we understand what's the purpose of that, and then we'll open the public hearing. Thank you.
Councilmember Glidden and Councilmember Johnson as sponsors of the resolution and members of the Committee of the Whole. The Responsible Contractor Law was adopted in 2014 and went into effect on January 1st, 2015. The city is obligated to comply with the law and has been doing so for the past year and a quarter. The resolution before you reaffirms the city's commitment to follow the Responsible Contractor Law. And under subdivision six of the law, the city has the option to add factors to be considered by the city in determining who is and who is not a responsible contractor. The resolution addresses the prevailing wage obligation that Ms. Corbell just presented for construction contracts entered into by the city.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm just double checking. I don't see questions, so thank you. And with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing and ask if there is anybody who would like to testify, and just either before or after you testify, if you would not mind signing up over there. But introduce yourself, and we're happy to hear your comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Councilmembers. Dan McConnell, 3317, 47th Avenue South, Minneapolis, Board Two. Just want to commend Director Corbell and her staff on their great work on this. As you mentioned, we've been working on this for a long time, actually, before I even had my current job as Business Manager of the Building Trade that was working on this in another capacity. So we're here after five years of discussion, and thank you for the stakeholder meeting last week. I thought it was very informative and helpful, and I think there's broad consensus on this. Ms. Corbell mentioned the Affordable Granite case. We did also do a change over the legislature that passed. I think two or three people voted against it to allow employees the similar rights to sue for non-payment of wages. So I think there's broad understanding on both sides of the aisle, even with the legislature, that paying people for their work is an important thing. And we just really appreciate everyone's work on this and hope that people will support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McConnell. Is there anyone else who would like to speak as part of the public hearing on this ordinance? Anyone else who would like to speak? Not seeing anyone, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And I will go ahead and, I think I'll do this separately. I'll first move approval of the prevailing wage requirements for public improvement contracts ordinance amendments and ask if there's any discussion there. Not seeing any. And I just wanted to say a couple words and just really, this has been a pretty long effort. I want to thank my co-author, Council President Johnson. She and I have sat in many meetings over the years on how we might work on improvements to enhancing what I think is one of the best of wage theft tools that we currently have that is specific to the city of Minneapolis, which is our prevailing wage ordinance, and how we can strengthen that and make sure the tools are working the best for everyone. And so thank you to staff and Mr. Ginder as well, who is no longer here, who has had in many meetings on this, and Ms. Corbell. And of course, a lot of the stakeholders who brought the issues to the city and said, how can we work on strengthening this? And so thank you to Mr. McConnell for taking his time to be here, but there were others involved as well. So with that, I'm going to ask for the vote on this. Not seeing any other comments. All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that item is approved. And I'm going to also move approval of the related item, which was the resolution affirming the name of it here, Commitment to the Responsible Contractor Act. Any discussion on that resolution? Not seeing any. All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that item is approved. Thank you very much to my colleagues. Next, we are moving on to what is now item number three on our agenda, and this is the Neighborhood Park Plan Ordinance. And we will have a brief presentation by Ms. Siegel on the proposed ordinance and also an update on some of the opinions of the city attorney that we had had some discussion of, I think at our March 16th meeting. And I think there's an update that we're going to hear from the city attorney on sort of the broader range of options that the park board is pursuing to ensure that they have full options for pursuing increased funding to the parks.
Great. Madam Chair, members of the committee, I did hear the emphasis on the word "brief", and I will honor that. So a brief overview of the proposed ordinance that's been introduced by Council President Johnson and Councilmember Lisa Goodman. It's a joint Minneapolis Public Parks and Recreation Board City 20-Year Financial Plan for Neighborhood Parks. That would be applicable from 2017 through 2036. The idea is that both the park board and the city would adopt concurrent ordinances and that this plan would be in lieu of any ballot measure for additional funding during the term of the ordinance. It includes a provision for startup funding of $1.5 million in 2016 for the neighborhood park system, and then also added operating funds going forward that the city council would agree to recommend to the Board of Estimate and Taxation, a $3 million increase in the park board's annual base levy, starting in 2017 and continuing forward from there. Then, in order to provide additional capital funding for improvements and rehabilitation of the neighborhood parks, the proposal is to provide a guaranteed minimum of $10.5 million per year for 20 years. $2.5 million is already allocated in the existing city click funding process, so this would provide an additional $8 million. It could be used only for the neighborhood park system as opposed to the regional parks. And there's a provision in the ordinance for a review every five years to determine if there's a need for an inflation adjustment. The ordinance also provides that the city can reduce funding for the following year in the event of an exigent economic circumstance or an unanticipated critical need. And there's also provisions that the city would continue to provide its current level of funding, which is 11.79% of the city's local government aid funding to the park board. And there's also a provision that if the city significantly reduces or suspends providing the annual guaranteed minimum amount for at least three consecutive years, then the ordinances would automatically terminate. The Minneapolis Parks and Recreation Board has made a request to the Charter Commission for a proposed charter amendment as well as this proposed ordinance. That would seek an amendment allowing the park board to levy an additional 0.0388% of the value of taxable property in the city for 20 years. That would be equivalent in using 2016 values for market, for the estimated market value of property of $15 million for year, per year for 20 years. And it further provides in the charter amendment proposal language that this funding would be in addition to all existing sources of park funding, including their regular annual The Charter Commission has discussed this at a couple of meetings. They have deferred scheduling, public hearings on it. At their last meeting, our office was asked whether we thought this was a proper subject for a charter amendment, and it is our opinion that it is a proper subject. Minnesota statutes governing what can go into a charter states that it may provide for the establishment and the administration of all departments of a city government. The park board is, while it is a unique department, it is a department of the city, and we think it would be a proper subject. And there is some precedent in our charter already for a minimum level of funding for police and for funding for the Civil Service Commission. At the last meeting of the Charter Commission, Susan Trammell and Burt Osborne from my staff, along with Finance and the park board's council, were asked to review terminology in the proposal because we do think there needs to be some technical changes in the terminology to accord with proper financial practices in the property tax area. Any questions?
So I'm not seeing questions right now. I just want to note, we do have several people signed up to speak at the public hearing, and we can engage in more discussion and conversation after the public hearing. And so, Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to bring everyone up to date on where we're at right this minute, just so that it can be in the context of what's happening, if that's okay with the chair?
Thank you.
Okay. So Council President Johnson and I introduced this, and it's moved through the public hearing process today. But simultaneously, Council President Johnson and I, Councilmember Glidden, Palmisano, and Quincy are working with the mayor's office to come up with a potential plan for funding park needs as well as 30-year road-related needs. We are into the process. We have met. We'll be meeting again this week. But in order to honor our commitment to the park system, that we would have an answer for them either way, whether or not we can work out something or not, we wanted to keep this process moving. It is my understanding, and I have spoken with the park system folks, that anyone who came down today should definitely have the opportunity to speak. And there perhaps could be another public hearing in the next cycle on any compromise that we're able to come up with. So I just wanted to update everyone on that process and urge anyone who's participating in it if they want to chime in on that. Madam Chair, I also just want to state that the proposal that is in front of us via ordinance and resolution is in agreement with the park system. In other words, this is something the park system supports and has worked with us on. And so we shouldn't be surprised if people get up and say this is something they support. They also support doing a referendum. And those are the two options that are before them. As we speak, hopefully there'll be another option available sometime soon, but those are the options in front of us right now.
So thank you, Councilmember Goodman. I might just also note that the city council had its first discussion of potential financial implications in its Ways and Means Meeting that happened on Monday of this week. And so I think it's accurate to say that there are several ongoing pieces of public discussion. And so thank you for your comments, Councilmember Goodman. So again, we have a public hearing scheduled. I want to invite anyone who would like to speak and who hasn't yet had an opportunity to sign up. We have places for you to sign up, and we'll just continue going with the public hearing until everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity to. I'm going to ask if you could please try to hold your comments to about two minutes, just because we do have several people signed up to speak. We want to make sure everybody gets an opportunity to do so. And is there someone else who wanted to? Okay. All right. And then there's another council member who wants to make a comment before we open the public hearing, so we're about to do that. And Councilmember Gordon?
Well, thank you. And I just wanted to get clarity on what the expectation is for me today on whether or not I'll be voting on any action. And also, I thought it might help if we just, and maybe that was clear and I missed it, but before the public hearing, if it's clear what we'll be doing today and even on Friday, I think the plan now is not to take action today necessarily, and not to take action this Friday necessarily, but probably have something that we'll be acting on at the next council meeting, I think on the 29th.
So I will take that as a question to the authors.
Okay.
On whether they are intending to move anything, because that would be, if they would move something, that then we would be essentially asked to vote on that. And I have not heard that that's what they intend, but one of them should speak to that. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, it is not our intention to ask anyone to vote on the resolution today. We are very hopeful that there will be a compromise, and we're working towards that in full and good faith. And as a result of that, we're not asking anyone to vote on anything today, nor will we be bringing anything in front of the council on Friday. Should we not get to that point, then you should expect we're going to ask for a vote. But until then, we're, like I said, we are very hopeful that we can come to some sort of agreement on both of these issues towards something that a lot of people could support.
And I guess I'll just say, with respect to the public hearing, my intention would be just to continue the public hearing at this point. So I think that is the easiest course, though. So we will open the public hearing, and that means then that I won't close the public hearing. I will just continue it until a future meeting. All right? So with that, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. And that means we'll start going through people who have signed up to speak thus far, and we will continue until everyone who would like to has had an opportunity to speak. Our first speaker is Russ Henry. I'm going to name off the next few speakers, so you can maybe just position yourself, be ready to go. We have Jordan, sorry about this, Parshall, and Joan Nemec and Mike Tate. Mr. Henry?
Madam Chair, council members, I'm here today to speak in support of funding for neighborhood parks. Parks are a very progressive place for us to put our tax dollars because they are investments that serve, directly serve communities and neighborhoods. It's wonderful to see everyone here trying to find ways to properly fund the parks, and it's great to know the mayor is working on that as well. Of course, our streets are also very important to fund, and so I hope we consider that during this time in a complete funding package. There are two major areas of improvement that I would like to stress for the language we're developing for this funding plan. First of all, we need stronger equity language. We need to know exactly where this money's going to go, and it should be guaranteed to go to low-income and communities of color first. I have learned through working with Hope Community and taking some of the trainings there, the good folks there have taught me that in terms of programming, and I think this is reflected in facilities, if we look, take one example, PV Park, and we look at the number of programs that serve all of the people there, that's there at the corner of Franklin and Portland and Chicago, there's four programs for all the folks in the neighborhood there. If we take the same size of park and same type of park over in Southwest, we'll find that that park has 44 programs for all the people in that neighborhood. So 11 times greater programming in wealthier neighborhoods. This is something that I can't stress enough. We absolutely need to make sure that the funding for improvements in neighborhood parks is done equitably. And secondly, I would really feel comfortable about this if we know for sure where the money's coming from before it's passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jordan? Mr. Parshall?
Good morning, Councilman Glidden, members of the council. My name's Jordan Parshall. I'm a first-year student at Augsburg College studying urban studies. I've come to this city from Blaine, Minnesota, and I've just lived here for a few months. But in that time, I've decided that Minneapolis is a place that I want to live for the rest of my life. I've made that decision because while Minneapolis is a blossoming urban place where great city is indeed rising, it's also the city of lakes and parks, and I think we need to maintain that integrity. It's a place where even though it's urban, I'd feel comfortable raising a family because I know that my kids would have good parks to play at so that they could go to sleep at night. But there's not just my family. There's a sense of urgency around this matter, council members. Right now, millennials are growing up, and they're finally buying homes. Goldman Sachs says that the main age that millennials will be buying homes is between 25 and 45 years of age. While millennials are finally reaching that point, we need to invest in our parks to make sure that those families are coming to Minneapolis. Furthermore, we need to make sure that we are investing in equity and in closing some of those racial disparities that we see across our city. You know, racial disparities do not- You know, racial disparities do not make for a good place to live for my future family or for any millennial families. You know, and we talk a lot, council members, about how new growth in this city is not made for families, it's made for young, single hipsters, right? Well, this is an opportunity where we can put our money where our mouth is, and we can invest in our parks. So I would implore you, with a sense of urgency, act on this issue and fund our parks in 2016. Do not wait for 2017. Do not wait for 2018, but fund it this year. Thank you, council.
Okay, Joan Nemec, and if people can start just getting ready, Mike Tate and Tony Stirl.
Good morning. My name is Joan Nemec. Full disclosure, I'm a former 10th Ward Councilmember. I represented the city from '84 to '93, and my last two years I was vice president, so I chaired the meeting that we're in today, so good to be back. And also, I worked for the Minneapolis Parks. I was the head of community planning, which is head of the planning department, and during that time, we redid Minnehaha Parkway, Lake of the Isles, Northeast Park, and Dog Parks. I'm here today representing the Minneapolis League of Women Voters. The League has always had an interest in parks. They first approved an increase in the Mill Levee in 1937, and there have been many actions since then related to the parks. I am part of a two-year study that started in the fall of 2014. We have completed the study, and this month our members are studying it. We have always supported adequate financing for the parks, and so we are supportive of what the parks has done with their actions to increase their spending, whether it is by referendum or petition. And the reason that the League is so supportive is because of the study, the two-year study that the parks have done with their request assessment of facilities and programs, and then, secondly, their service max area master plans. So, parks are all ready to go. Let's help them, and I appreciate the movement and the work of Council Presidents Johnson and Goodman to get us going along expeditionously. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We have next Mike Tate, and then Tony Stirl, and then Tom Evers.
Madam Chair, City Council members, my name is Mike Tate, North Minneapolis resident, but Minneapolis resident as a whole. I've been a four-year coach, volunteer coach in North Minneapolis for four decades. I was one of the park kids, 16-year-old when I started. The reason why I continue to give back to the neighborhoods of which I service is because parks do make a difference. They train kids on how to build relationships with others. They build contacts in the neighborhood to protect the neighborhoods, as you see in North Minneapolis and some of our South Minneapolis areas, that we need more programming in our parks. But our parks are falling apart. We owe it to the next generations to take care of those parks. So my grandkids and your grandkids have somewhere, areas to play to build relationships. I don't know if any of you have been watching Jackie Robinson on Channel 2, but I advise you to get to it, because it tells you something about what a ball field will do to change white, black, Asian, Mexican, Latino, Somali. It brings people together. So just think about this, if we build those park systems from our youth to our adult ages, what we could be as a community to be safer, to be productive, to be loving and caring. Do not take this chance to let the parks fall apart before we make a change. Let's do it now. Let's do it while we got a chance to build a neighborhood stronger, safer, and loving. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Tony Stirl, Tom Evers, and then Carol Becker.
Thank you, Councilmember Glidden. I want to first thank you all for the careful thought and consideration that you've given this park funding problem so far. And I'm here today to speak in favor of the Johnson-Goodman agreement. Right from the start, this campaign for new funding for neighborhood parks has been personal for me. It's personal for me because I know when the day comes, hopefully not too terribly far in the future, when I have kids of my own, I want them to be able to go to our local neighborhood park, in my case, it's Bryant Square Park, and play on well-maintained fields and in well-maintained facilities. And that's something I want for all Minneapolis kids, because if you go to almost any park, you'll hear about how kids get dropped off in the morning and are oftentimes there all day long, probably because their parents know that a park is a safe place where they can play and learn and form relationships with one another. And I believe that's something that matters to our city. I think that's a system that's worth investing in, and I think it's a system that's worth maintaining. Our citizen group, Save Our Minneapolis Parks, and our drive to get new park funding has been formally endorsed by park groups, by green groups like the Sierra Club, by unions, by voter activist groups, both partisan and nonpartisan. Our citizen committee is made up of students, of coaches, of small business owners, of neighborhood activists, of people who care about improving their communities. Just this past weekend, the Minneapolis DFL, of which many of you are members, voted overwhelmingly in favor of a resolution in support of either a referendum or the Johnson-Goodman agreement to maintain our parks. And we know that over 70% of Minneapolis residents favor a tax increase to maintain our park system. So I really do believe that our city is looking to you to solve this problem, and I hope that you will rise to the challenge. So I just want to close by thanking you again for helping to make this critical issue a part of the conversation. I want to thank you for working towards a solution, because that solution is going to benefit our residents, and it's going to benefit our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tom Evers, Carol Becker, and Casey Krolczuk, thank you.
Good morning. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I want to thank the City Council Chair and the City Council for your thoughtful deliberation on this. My name is Tom Evers. I live in the Standish neighborhood and in less than two blocks from Sibley Park. I'm also the executive director of the Minneapolis Parks Foundation. I'm here today as a father and a homeowner who believes that the park system is the single most important asset in Minneapolis, and that neighborhood parks define our communities. The parks have been integral to my family's life in Minneapolis. We bought our home 10 years ago, and from, while we were expecting walking from neighborhood park to neighborhood park, knowing where there would be public restrooms, to bringing our toddlers to the wading pools in the playgrounds and meeting other parents, to taking advantage of the summer camps that are available in the park system throughout the city, they have helped form my family. We've met other parents through leagues and events at Sibley and Hiawatha Park, and have strengthened those bonds at our neighborhood school, Northrup. In the winter, we have taken advantage of the ice rinks and the warming house that are open to everyone. Two weeks ago, my daughter and I walked to Hiawatha Park Recreation Center to sign her up for softball. The next day she came home thrilled to learn that several of her classmates are also signed up to play softball. It brings us together. They're anxiously awaiting practice, and I know the transition from the winter ice rinks to the softball fields in the summer is why we're able to enjoy both seasons in this system. I've attended a countless neighborhood meetings and festivals in our recreation centers, and am proud every November to walk into Sibley Park to cast my vote. My house is 109 years old, and it is likely that every resident in this house before me has enjoyed this same park system, and in the last century has grown to love Sibley Park. That's why I'm working hard to ensure this, that we continue to pass this to the next generation. Minneapolis is undergoing a renaissance of parks. There is significant investment throughout the city in iconic parks on the Central Riverfront, in downtown, and the Upper Riverfront, and that's important for great cities. But unless we invest in long-term, sustainable, protected funding for the city of Minneapolis, and to the promise to the neighborhood parks, these iconic parks and this growth will ring hollow. So I encourage you, and am thrilled by the conversation, to find a solution that's long-term, sustainable, and sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Carol Becker, and then Casey Krolczuk, Chuck, excuse me, and then Bobby Wilensky.
So, as you guys know, I'm on the Board of Estimate and Taxation, saying that for the people out in the public who have no idea what we do. And one of the things that's been bothering me for the last five or six years, our lack of investment in our infrastructure. My park, Longfellow Park, took my daughter there, and when it rains outside, it rains in every room of that building, except for the gymnasium, as I found out. If you go to the beam on the southeast corner and you touch it, it will crumble into your hands. I have a piece of it on my dash on my car, because I didn't want to throw it away, and maybe one of the park commissioners will take it off my hands. The building has mold, the building has mice, and that's where I'm supposed to take my daughter. I'm just incensed that we, as a community, have let things get to this point. I get that there are issues between the Park Board, which was created 100 years ago to be a thorn in the side of the City Council, and there haven't always been great relationships, but we need to fix this, and we need to fix it together. I'm excited about this proposal that will finally bring the City Council and the Park Board together in a joint proposal to fix this, because this is our city and our community. I can't say how much I support doing this. My nine-year-old needs this. We need this as a community. I hope you guys will support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Becker. Casey Krolczuk, then Bobby Wilensky, and then Catherine Switatski.
Good morning, council members. I specifically wanted to speak in favor of this Johnson-Goodman agreement, and specifically the provision for 20 years of funding for our neighborhood parks. You know, I've been involved with this campaign for the last couple of months, and I've gotten to smile inwardly and outwardly, knowing that my own kids are going to grow up in a park system that is well-funded and well-maintained. Also being involved with this campaign, I know how much work goes into this. I know Councilmember Bender, Councilmember Glidden have hosted events on this, and I'm sorry if other council members have, and I haven't been to those. I've gotten to sit down and talk with my own council member, and it takes a lot of work to get something like this off the ground. There are neighborhood association meetings, there's been door knocking, there's been phone banking, there's been going through parks and talking with people who are using them about these issues that we're facing. I've been to Augsburg College, I've been to the University of Minnesota, talking with students. So it takes a tremendous amount of effort, and so for both those reasons, I really want to applaud that plan, or that provision to go ahead with a 20-year plan.
Thank you, sir. Bobby Wilensky, then Catherine Switatski, then John Hayden.
Council members, my name is Bobby Wilensky. I'm 16 years old. You may know my mother, Park Board President Liz Wilensky. Over the years, the way I've used the parks has changed a lot. When I was little, I used the wading pool at the playground at my local park, Highview. After that, I went to preschool day camp at other parks, plus swimming lessons at Lupi and Water Park. I played basketball and T-ball at the park, and during a time when I was interested in Robin Hood, I went to the archery range. I'm still short one arrow. My dad tried, tried to be the key word here, to teach me to ride a bike at the park, failed horribly. And I used the baseball field to practice my fly casting for fishing. Nowadays, I fish at the lakes and the river and practice my swing at the driving range. As a Minneapolis kid, I use the parks, and I want them for all the other kids to use too while they are growing up. Thank you for your time, and please help our parks.
Thank you, Mr. Wilensky. Catherine Switatski, then John Hayden, then Brian Lesny.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. My name's Catherine Switatski, and I'm coming with a lot of questions about the proposal. I love parks, and I think everybody in this room agrees that they're really important to keeping our neighborhoods vibrant, and they're really truly a part of what makes this city great. But I work in a nonprofit with children and families experiencing homelessness, so I view almost everything that I do with an equity framework. And from what I've learned, equity occurs when the process is inclusive of multiple voices and the process is transparent. And those two things are what I'm concerned about not happening with this agenda item, especially because it's been maybe pulled out of the traditional budget cycle. From what I understand about budgets, budgets are about priorities, and parks absolutely should be one of our priorities, but if we funded every one of our priorities outside of the traditional budget cycle, how problematic would that be? We really need to consider this and every other budgetary item in context of what else is going on in the city, and we should really look at it holistically. More specifically, in the proposal, $10.5 million per year is going to parks, but a funding source isn't really identified for it. From what I understand, it says we'll find the money at City Hall somewhere. And you know what? While I completely agree that it's important to fund our parks, and you can hear stories for days about crumbling buildings, I think that some of these things really, really need to be answered before it goes for a vote in a few weeks. Again, I'm hoping that some of these questions are going to be answered and that we find a funding source for that before we go to a vote. Again, the importance of neighborhood parks, I'm sure you guys know even better than a lot of us in this room about what's going on in some of our buildings, but I really hope that those are considered before it goes to a vote, so thank you.
Thank you very much. John Hayden?
Thank you.
Then Brian Lesny.
Thank you. It's John Hayden, Word 1. I would affirm the things that were just said. I'm here today to caution against creating a false dilemma that we have the Johnson-Goodman deal, or we get rid of our parks and destroy them. I'm here, my day job is Genesis Works. We work to close the opportunity gap, of which we have a big problem in Minneapolis, is a big priority that needs to be represented in our budget. I also speak on behalf of No Labels Minnesota. We're for healthy government, transparent, and following the processes that we have in place. So I would affirm some of the concerns that Mayor Hodges has about this, and that it is not balanced and does not keep all of our priorities in mind. So I do not support it as is. If we were to include measures that are balanced, in our view of our priorities in the city, that include provisions for our roads, like Mayor Hodges has suggested, and also, like the first speaker suggested, that we have equity, and that we are serving our communities of color first, because that serves a greater purpose, multiple purposes. So I would say, Councilman Reich, as transportation guy, that's what I'll call you, I don't think that's your official title, but I think you should approve something that incorporates roads as well, because we have the number-one park system several years running, and that has not done anything to help our people of color. I read an article yesterday, Minneapolis, number three worst place to live if you're black, but number one in parks. So we need to think about equity, and we think about all of our priorities as we consider this. We also need to really consider our roads. I urge you then to hold off until the next budget, so that the parks can have some more specific details about how they're going to use the money, rather than just $10.5 million on repairs. That's equitable, it makes sense, it's fiscally sober, and so that it can be balanced with the priorities of our city, to include roads and all of that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry, I have a kind of handmade timer going on here, so I'm not trying to be annoying to the speakers. I apologize.
You don't need it from me.
I'm trying to work it out. So, Mr. Lesny, and then let me just read through a couple of the additional names, and if people would like to speak, I just encourage you also to sign up. Mark Andrew, Michael Wilson, Carlos Zingray. Mr. Lesny?
Good morning. So I have two daughters, five years old, and a son, two years old. So as you can imagine, I want, I'm strongly supportive of dollars going to neighborhood parks. As I follow this, I have some concerns and some questions as well. There needs to be clarity about what is and is not a neighborhood park amenity, stronger language about dollars staying in neighborhood, things that are funded by the general fund staying within Minneapolis, and then that will hold future park boards accountable. There's also in the Johnson-Goodman Amendment, it says owned, operated, and maintained by the Minneapolis Park Board. That would not, maybe not necessarily include the Phelps Park, so just some clarifying language there. And then, as far as equity, this is very important to me. I'm an appointee on the request, Citizen, where does the acronym, the Request CAC, and there's an equity subcommittee we're going to meet for the first time in May and go over these things, looking at over the next 20... May and go over these things, looking at over the next 20 years.